Good evening and everyone, and welcome to the Kent City Council Special Meeting Workshop. Today is Tuesday, October 27, 2020. This is a remote meeting due to the COVID-19 health and safety requirements from the Governor. Welcome to anyone joining us on Kent TV 21, the Facebook City of Kent page, the YouTube Kent TV 21 channel, and anyone that is dialing in this evening. We just have one topic on our special workshop today, and it's the continued conversation of the 2021-2022 biennial budget. So I am going to turn it over to Paula Painter to get us going, and we will go from there. Welcome, Paula.
Thank you, Council President Troutner, members of City Council. I'm excited to be here tonight. I'm going to start tonight off by wrapping up hopefully the last of the questions that you guys have had. I know we do have some questions that are on our list that are going to be brought forth later in either early in 2021 as a workshop, either put on by the Parks Department. But many of the questions have already been answered, so I have a couple left that I want to be able to run through with you tonight. And then we will move on to the next portion of the agenda to talk about some of the consensus that came from the meeting that we, the workshop that we had last week, and then additional, continue with some conversations that we started and were not able to finish prior to the conclusion of the worksheet. Next slide, please, Michelle. So one of the outstanding questions is question number 76, and it says, "On page 86, we see $1 million REIT listed under Kent Memorial Park renovation. Where does REIT show on the revenue pages? Is it part of property tax?" I didn't see the acronym prior to this page. So I do apologize for the acronyms that do show up in here. What you're seeing is a snippet from page 103 of your book, and real estate excise tax is actually a revenue stream that comes into our capital resources fund. There are actually three distinct sources of this REIT in real estate, this real estate excise tax, or we tend to call REIT. We do get a very small portion of our real estate excise tax from the state, but really that is the very small minute amount that does come in. The bigger portions of REIT actually come in through the county. We tend to refer to them as REIT 1 and REIT 2. So what it is, it's a quarter percent of that is charged on the sale of property or real estate. And so there are restrictions that are set within the RCW that determines how those monies can be spent. The first quarter percent of REIT is what goes into our general capital within that capital resources fund. The second quarter percent, now that is used for our parks capital. And so when we look at the capital resources fund, you will see that we do have it broken out by general capital and our parks capital. So all together for the year, we are looking at a $3.5 million budget that is for 2021 and 2022. Of that, 50% or $1,750,000 would be going towards general capital, and then the other $1,750,000 would be going towards our parks capital. So the question was that you didn't see this on the revenue pages, and I'm assuming there that you're referring to the very beginning pages of the book where we're really focused on general fund. And since REIT is not a general fund revenue, it does not show up in that section. But again, you'll find some information on those revenues on page 103. Any further questions on that?
I think we're good, Paula.
All right, next slide, please. So question number 81. Will the departments go in detail on their budget cuts and talking about the revenue reductions? This question actually was brought up, I believe, at the time, around the time that they were doing their departmental presentations. And the departments were really focused on their expenditure budgets, and that's being that the legal adopted budget is on the expenditure side. But I thought I'd take a moment to at least address some of the revenue reductions that you're seeing in the proposed budget. As you recall, back in May, we did an extensive budget reduction exercise. And you can see through the budget adjustments that have been done in the system, we have reduced the expenditure side of the house. What you're not seeing is reductions on the revenue side, being that the revenue really isn't the driving factor within the budget. So what you're looking at here for 2020 adjusted budget is pretty much what you're looking at as far as what we've had budgeted and anticipated prior to COVID. When you listen to Michelle's presentation today, when she brought forth the September monthly reports, you could see, looking at the general fund, that some of those departmental revenues, that would be our licenses and permits, charges for services, fines and forfeitures, miscellaneous revenues, et cetera. That all, we're seeing some significant reductions and estimated that by the end of 2020, so by the end of this year, that we're expected to see reductions. A prime example is charges for services. We're expected to see a 43% decline in those revenues by the end of the year. So what you're seeing here is within our licenses and permits, charges for services, you're really seeing some of that trueing up. We're not anticipating going into next year and being right, starting January off, right at the same levels that we were looking at in the beginning of 2020. We do know that there continues to be some of the restrictions in place, the stay healthy restrictions that have been in place. Some of those restrictions are lightening, however, or lessening. However, we're still not back to where we're going to be with those. The great news is that we can continue to look at, we can continue to look at these revenues and make adjustments as needed as we do the mid-biennium budget adjustment. But really going into this budget cycle, this is just taking into account some of those major reductions that we have been seeing in 2020, but clearly not going to the extent that we're seeing during this year. Are there any further questions on this?
I think we're good, Paula. I don't have any hands raised.
All right, fantastic. Well, those were the last of the two questions that I had still outstanding that wouldn't be addressed going into 2021 or at a later date by a department. There were some things that were going to be followed up with later. So this is the conclusion of that. So let's go ahead and go to the next slide. And during the last budget workshop, it seemed as though there was some consensus among city council members related to some modifications to the mayor's proposed budget. And in there, there was the recommendation of $50,000 use of fund balance to hire a consultant to evaluate the best practices on police-related data. So now, we have earmarked this as a modification that we will be making to the budget before we do bring it forward to council, to the committee of the whole on November 10. In addition, the co-responder program, there was consensus to use $100,000 from the newly enacted sales tax to be able to do some research and developments on some mental health co-responder programs in concert with other interested South King County cities. And then that too will be added to the proposed budget, the mayor's proposed budget, before bringing forth to council. Next slide, please. So it is my understanding that this is still what is left out here to discuss and to come to some consensus on for some policy decisions going forward. As far as behavioral health programs, there was a recommendation to use $130,000 of that new sales tax towards youth behavioral health. In addition, another proposal came forth this week to use in addition to the $130,000, an additional $70,000. There were also two technology projects that were a point of discussion last week, and that was MAM, the multimedia asset management system, and Sprout. So I think at this time, I'd like to hand this back over to Council President Troutner and allow you guys to have some further discussions on these outstanding items.
Great, thank you so much, Paula. So yes, I believe we can all agree that these were a few of the items that we left to move forward to talk about today. The $130,000 out of the hospital, $1,590 was something that was proposed by Councilmember Voice along with the MAM and Sprout. But I don't think we've discussed the adding that $70,000 for youth behavioral health. Councilmember Fincher, do you want to make any comments about that?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I think it's important that if we want to make a good dent in this, that we remember that youth also have a lot of behavioral issues, whether it's in the classroom, whether it's at home, those who are old enough, and I'm talking about, you know, the five-year-old in kindergarten or the 14-year-old who is having problems because, you know, they had a relationship breakup. Right now, there's a lot of stressors going on, and kids are picking that up at home. If we stop some of these problems while they're still at the mental health stage, then they don't get to the mental illness stage. A lot of dollars go to adults for mental health, but we often leave out the kids. Historically, youth and child mental health has not been funded in the way that adult mental illness has. So I think it's important to put in that extra so that we can affect or have a better effect on what we're trying to do to make it more effective. We have, you know, the adults get it because that's who you see. That's who the police are arresting, that's people see on their business doorsteps. But if we get to that early, then we alleviate a lot of those problems. We don't have as many people who are having problems with the police. We don't have the number of people who are having problems on their jobs and in their relationships, whether it be domestic violence, whether it be substance abuse, whether it be other physical and chemical behavioral conditions. So I would like to see that because of the impact it has on the family, on the community. I think that that additional, rounded up to $200,000, would be well-spent for the community, but I would like it to be specifically for the youth.
Thank you for those comments, Councilmember Fincher. Councilmember Voice, do you have a comment?
Thank you, Madam President, and Councilmember Fincher. I strongly agree with you. I think this is a good thing to do. I guess as we go forward and hear the will about a council member, I'd be interested to see where would this money go, you know, for the process? Do it go to Human Services, a grant? Maybe understandably, I guess, we'll wait to see what's the will of the council member, then that would be the next discussion. I'll kind of let the, kind of get my arms around, but I wholeheartedly support you and your thoughts and your idea of customer venture.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Voice. Councilmember Larmour.
Thank you, Council President. Yeah, I just want to say that I support this as well, the full funding at the full $200,000 level. Based on conversations, you know, we've had it throughout the week. I do agree that this is an, this is an area that we need to do more work. And I think even the shots fired statistics coming out of King County that Chief Padilla reviewed last week with us, I think even that shows that, you know, that 18- to 25-year-old group is, you know, not getting the services that perhaps they need. So I think focusing on the youth mental health before it becomes mental illness or before it becomes a pattern of crime with like domestic violence and some of these other stressors, I think, you know, this would be a good investment of our funds to try to get ahead of that and provide the services before the youth are reaching that age group. So I fully support this at the full $200,000 level.
Thank you, Councilmember Larmour. Councilmember Michelle.
Thank you, Council President. I too support Councilmember Fincher's addition of these funds.
Thank you, Councilmember Cor.
Thank you, Madam President. I fully support Councilmember Fincher's proposal as well because as my colleague said, that this is an investment we need to make. This is something we need to work on for our youth because we need to correct these behaviors and help our youth before they have, you know, further issues. So they, you know, they're needing support with mental health, especially right now with everyone being home and kids not being able to hang out with their friends. I believe it's impacting them even further than it has ever before. So I think that's a great, great investment, and I am definitely 100% in it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Cor. As we're all speaking, I'm seeing everyone nodding their heads in agreement. So this is definitely something I think we're all getting behind. Councilmember Thomas.
Thank you, Madam President. I think what needs to be said has already been said. I want to show my support as well.
Thank you, Councilmember Thomas. Councilmember Fincher, we're coming back around to you.
Thank you. You know, I just wanted to tack on to Councilmember Larmour's comments. As you know, I serve on the Mid, the Mental Illness and Drug Dependency Advisory Committee. And in some of our reports, we have heard that a large number of our youth, young adults who are incarcerated, have, most of them have co-occurring conditions from trauma and past experiences, things that have gone on in their life. So again, we go to the mental or behavioral health aspect of even the incarcerated and stopping crime, the gunshots, the violence. You know, even people think of domestic abuse in homes. There's also domestic abuse between high schoolers and junior high schoolers or middle schoolers when they are in a relationship and have grown up with that pattern. Oftentimes, it starts repeating because they think that's what, how a relationship is supposed to be. So being able to change that early or to address it before the problems occur is hugely important to our community and to the individuals.
Thank you, Councilmember Fincher. So again, we're all kind of saying the same things here. There is a consensus to round that up. Is there any other final thoughts or comments on this portion of the discussion? I think we're all in agreement that this is really something that we feel that we all agree is very, very important, not only during this difficult time that we're going through, but I think just in general, we need to make sure we make a commitment to the youth in our community.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilmember Voice.
Get back to my original statement, and we understand the will of the council. Can we get some ideas and thoughts how this will be set up? Is it too early for that, or would this be in Human Services or Grant process? I'm just, if we don't know now, that's fine, but sooner or later, we're going to have to understand that process.
Right, and I think that is something that we can all kind of be thinking about at this point. You know, Councilmember Larmour, you proposed this in the beginning, and then Councilmember Fincher, you have added to this. So I think it'll, if we can get through this budget process, and then we can all step back and take a look at where we would possibly want to move forward with this. I think that's a great question. And, you know, again, maybe looking ahead to what we think the legislator might do as well. There's a lot of time to work through the details of this. So just kind of keep thinking about it. I think it might be a little bit too early to have that conversation, but I do definitely think that, you know, maybe after the first year, we can kind of start looking at what options we have. Those are my thoughts.
And I understand that, and I guess, so the budget goes into effect with the first of the year, right? So we all understand there's a need out there, right? So if it takes staff to get out there and put some thoughts and ideals together, I mean, I think to me, that's something we could start working on, right? Because if there's a need out there, you may need it January 1st, January 2nd, I don't know, right? So I think it's something that we need to look at, just understand what that process is so we can move forward.
And I do agree. I see Marina's turned her mic off too. I know Marina, your department, you've mentioned it multiple times that right now, you just don't have the staff to be able to take on some of these extra things. But, you know, I think it's a responsibility of us as council members to also kind of think outside the box and look at what's happening in the region as well and see what we can come up with.
Can I add one of the, I'm sorry, quick. I think the process in ECDC, you know, with the care that, I mean, there was a, maybe you can look at that process and kind of maybe mirror some of that. I don't think, you probably need to start from scratch, but just an ideal of something you might can look at, Marina.
Yeah, I just wanted to jump in real quickly. We would be happy, my staff would be happy to research some options kind of in November and December in terms of what providers are doing some of this work in the community. I just heard from Lori today that the YMCA has actually expanded some into the behavioral health services realm, and that is partly in, well, it is in response to kind of the increased need for service for youth and mental health services in the community. So that is one thing that we could look into. And as Councilmember Fincher mentioned earlier, the mid-group, those partners have a really good understanding of who is available to do some of this work in the community and who has the capacity to do it. So that would not be a heavy lift for us by any stretch to go ahead and look into some of those options, and we would be more than happy to do that. I totally agree that this is something that we all need to be paying a lot of attention to in Kent, especially with youth who are being isolated and having a lot of challenges at home and also trying to go to school. And, you know, there's a lot of stressors, and I agree that this is something we want to get out in front of, so happy to help.
Thank you, Marina. Councilmember Larmour.
Yeah, so just one thought I've had during this is that, you know, I have a lot of friends that are teachers, and one thing I know that really concerns them and bothers them is that at times, they'll have students that just don't even show up to class or show up on camera, or, you know, or if they do show up, you know, like, they don't have cameras on, and they're just, they're not participating. So, you know, one thought would be maybe is there some way to engage with teachers and bring in, you know, teachers to kind of find out where, if there's some avenue to identify through their experiences, youth that are struggling with this remote arrangement. And there may be some opportunities there to somehow identify and engage those that need the support.
Good comment. Any other comments or concerns about this before we move on to the next topic? Again, I just want to thank everyone. This was a great conference. Um, this was a great compromise and a great job coming together to do something that we all agree is very, very important. So, um, thank you especially to council member Laramer and council member Fincher for, um, your proposals in the beginning. I appreciate it. All right, moving on, we have the discussion about MAM and Sprout. And we talked about multiple things last Tuesday. We talked about, um, the proposal was to keep them both, um, as part of, um, the mayor's budget and the programs that we would support. There was talk about removing both projects. Then there was talk about going forward with Sprout, or I'm sorry, MAM, and putting Sprout on hold. So I would just like to hear from my colleagues, um, if you've had some more time to think about it since last Tuesday. And council member Thomas, oh.
Yep, you're right. Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, I probably threw a stick in the mud last week. But, um, when I got home and actually walked away from this for a while, I began to think about how funny we were, worrying, uh, saying things like $100,000 wasn't that big a deal. And here then we're arguing about 30,000. So it's kind of cracked me up and so I would support both at this time.
All right, anybody else, council member Voice?
Uh, I was already on record last time we met, supporting both, so I haven't changed since the, uh, last one.
Okay. Council member Laramer, you have your mic off. Did you want to make a comment or anybody else? Um, go ahead and raise your hand if you have any comments or concerns about either of these proposals. All right, so just trying to get a consensus. Council member Thomas, you are okay with both. Council member Voice, you are okay with moving forward with both. Um, I'm just gonna go through my list of participants here and, um, just ask my colleagues, council member Laramer.
Um, I think, you know, the information that was provided by staff in this past week was pretty compelling. Um, it, it will help us engage and communicate with our residents. So despite my earlier reservations, I would support both at this time.
Okay, thank you, council member Fincher.
It won't kill me to support both, but I really think we've made a lot of leaps and bounds as, as it mentioned. And so I would be perfectly willing to hold off a year.
Okay, thank you for those comments. Council member Core.
Give it clarification, to hold off a year on what?
Hold off a year on Sprout.
Oh, okay.
Okay, council member Core.
Um, I'd have to agree with council member Fincher. Um, I'm okay with MAM going forward. Um, I think we can hold off just until next biennium to go with Sprout.
And council member Michelle.
Thank you, council president. Um, yeah, I thought we were going to hold off on Sprout until next year. But anyway, I, so I guess I support them.
Support going, if we, if we catch both of them, okay.
Yeah.
Um, I think like we said, that last week there was some conversation about doing one versus and holding off on the other. Um, initially we talked about doing both. Um, so right now it's just trying to decide. And this doesn't affect any of that money that, um, comes out of that previous proposal that we just talked about. So just so that everyone's kind of clear, this is just something that was already in the mayor's budget, um, that we would be supporting to continue forward, um, with MAM and Sprout. So, um, I'm going to kind of go through my tally. So if I, um, have something wrong here, um, let me know. So I have, um, council member Thomas, uh, council member Voice, council member Laramer, and then council member Michelle. Are we all supporting moving forward with, um, both of them?
Yes, for me.
Okay, so I think that's a consensus at this point. Um, and again, that doesn't affect the previous proposal where, um, you know, we're using that money to go towards behavioral health. So, um, I think that that, um, anybody else have any comments or questions about that? Kind of gives us a consensus at this point, moving forward with that. So, um, that ends all of the policy proposals that anybody had brought forward. Um, I'm, I just want to thank all of you for the questions that you put together these past several weeks, um, reaching out to the different departments, um, coming up with these, um, policy changes. You know, we kind of came up with something new where we asked council members to, if you came up with a proposal, you had to figure out where that funding was going to come from. And, um, you guys did a great job. We all worked together, we compromised in some things. And I think that, um, we've presented some, some great policies for the mayor to look at and doing some good things for our community. So I just want to thank everybody for making this process, um, go so smoothly. Anybody else? Uh huh.
That's what, I don't want to overshadow you. I, I, I just want to just second your thoughts. You, I just want to have council member Laramer and Core, and, and they asked a lot of questions. Sometimes we've been on council for a long time, so we know it all, but it gets to thinking differently. So I really appreciate all the question that came about and had me looking at these in a different way. So I think it's really been a team effort. And I just want to say, uh, thanks to my peers and fellow council member, really appreciate that.
Thank you, great comments. Anybody else have any comments or questions about, um, this process? Cause we've been talking about budget for, um, quite a while now. Um, and lots of questions have come forward. Council member Core.
Uh, I want to thank Paula for answering all the questions and being very patient. All the staff, uh, you know, responding to our crazy questions sometimes. Um, so I appreciate that. And to all my colleagues to listening to, um, the concerns and questions, uh, I brought up because they're necessarily not, um, you know, we probably don't agree with them, but thank you for listening. Um, we've come a long way and I know we have a long way to go, but it is what it is, so thank you.
Well said, council member Core. We all, um, sometimes have different ideas, but I think that the conversations that we've had around, um, you know, all of our questions or concerns, um, we've been able to really, um, talk about some things that are important. And again, I think we've come to some great compromise, um, during this process. So council member, anybody else have any questions or comments? I'm just looking for hands raised or if you just want to turn off your mic. And thank you so much Paula and Michelle. I know sometimes we might have challenged you, um, but you always, um, came back with answers and, um, were able to give us the information we needed to have these great discussions. So thank you so much for making this process easy. And again, to Madam Mayor for including us in this process. Again, this is your budget and you allow us to take a look at it and give our own suggestions and our feedback. And, um, I really appreciate it.
And also thank to you, Madam President, for guiding us through this process as well too. So thank you.
All right, so with that said, I think we have come to the end of our final budget workshop. I didn't know if I would be able to say this or not today, and I'm super excited to say that we did it. And again, um, thanks so much to all of you for, um, participating in this process and all of your comments and your thoughtfulness. And with that, if nobody else has anything else, I am going to end our meeting this evening. Have a good night, everyone.
How, how do you choose 100,000 versus 10,000 versus 50,000? I'm assuming there have been some historical data that maybe it happened in the last three years that kind of gave you this here? Just, can you help me with that please Marina?
We actually proposed the fund. We kind of considered it in terms of establishment.